We conduct a hearing of several federal funded grants that we receive as a school district. It's an opportunity for us to allow the public opportunity to ask questions on the funding strategies and the programs funded. We have Title 1A, Title 2A, Title 3, LEP, IDEA, Part B, and Special Education Preschool Budgets. All of these are what are referred to as entitlement budgets, meaning that we're entitled to so much funding per student based on the specifications of the individual program, whether it's economically disadvantaged students or students with special needs that need services provided by the district. We have provided copies of the budget to the Board of Education in advance, also made them available on our website, and had them out on the table tonight with the agendas. We have the Assistant Superintendent and respective directors available if there are questions from the community. If not, then we will note that we did conduct a hearing and provide notice and have the information available and will continue. The only note I would add is that because they're entitlement grants based on per pupil funding, as our enrollment declines, sometimes that means lesser funding, sometimes it doesn't. Again, it's based on specific classification of students, and while overall population goes down, that doesn't necessarily always mean that students that qualify for one of these federal programs goes down proportionately. Unfortunately, at the federal level, funding for many of these programs has either remained flat or not increased. There's currently consideration by Congress, and they've been considering it for a good little while, but there were a series of hearings recently on reauthorizing the No Child Left Behind, and it's been rebranded two different times. That's the umbrella. Federal legislation for funding all of the various entitlement grants and some competitive grants that are available, but pending that, it's continuing resolution, which means basically flat funding, in some cases, reduced funding for all school districts. So we're somewhat challenged as funds go down. The requirements to provide services to the students identified does not decrease, so our administrators and faculty that work in these programs have been extremely diligent in ensuring we continue to provide the services to the best of our ability. Last year, we had to move some portion of a person's salary into the general fund because of reduced funding and the need to continue those services. This year, at this point in time, we believe there's no need for any new general fund support. So with those comments, if the board members have questions, or if there are questions from the community, that will be the last part of the hearing tonight.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Well, all we need to do is adjourn, okay?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yep.
The August 11th regular, August 11th, 2015, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the August 11th, 2015, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received, for their review and consideration, the agenda and the materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Time Warner Cable Channel 96.96 and in Mentor on Channel 96.22. In Mentor on the Lake, the meeting can also be found on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Next on the agenda, any hearing of the public? Hearing done? Mr. Miller, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
We need to approve the minutes.
Oh.
Skip. We need to approve the minutes of the private meeting.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Now, hearing of the public, we'll try that again. Anyone? No. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 5A1 through 5A4.
Some of...
Second.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yeah.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, we are pleased tonight to recognize several staff members who are being honored for their commitment to their schools and to their students. And before we get started, I want to thank all of the new staff members and the staff members that we're honoring tonight, but also a special thanks to all the guests in the audience, family members of our new hires, and we really appreciate you being here and thank you for supporting your loved ones, and so we're glad that you're part of the Mentor Cardinal family as well. Tonight, for our district highlights, we're going to start with our master teacher, and this evening, we get to start with Mrs. Tracy Dunn, who's fulfilled the criteria for master teacher. Tracy?
This evening, I'm honored to present Tracy Dunn to the Board of Education. She's worked very hard to distinguish herself as a master teacher. Tracy has achieved this honor and has put forth a great deal of time and effort over the course of many years. A master teacher demonstrates excellence inside and outside the classroom through consistent leadership and focused collaboration to maximize student learning. A master teacher strives for distinguished teaching and continued professional growth as specified by the Ohio Standards for the Teaching Profession. Mentor Schools' master teachers need to understand student learning and development and respect the diversity of the students they teach. They need to know and understand the content area for which they have instructional responsibility. They need to understand and use varied assessments to inform instruction, evaluate, and ensure student learning. They need to plan and deliver effective instruction that advances the learning of each individual student. They need to create learning environments that promote high levels of learning and achievements for all the students. They need to collaborate and communicate with students, colleagues, administrators, and the community to support student learning, and assume responsibility for professional growth, performance, and involvement as an individual and as a member of the learning community. Tracy is a kindergarten teacher at Hopkins Elementary and has been an integral part of our blended learning initiatives. She was a mentor schools' first, she was the mentor schools' first teacher who went out on a limb and brought her students to Catalyst. Tracy has been recognized as an NSBA National School Board Association Top 20 to Watch and also an OETC Teacher Innovator. I am proud to announce Tracy Dunn as the distinguished master teacher recipient. Congratulations, Tracy.
Master teacher status is done in cooperation or conjunction with the Ohio Department of Education. Last year, we had seven master teachers. That tells you about the competition every year. Next, we are pleased to recognize our Outstanding Service Award winners. Every year, nominations are taken for a classified staff member to receive this award. Nominees must demonstrate enthusiasm for his or her responsibilities, a commitment to mentor schools, and have the respect of colleagues, parents, and students. The six winners selected this year fit that criteria perfectly. It is our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2015 Outstanding Service Awards. I'm going to start in alphabetical order with Mr. Chris Bowman. Chris?
Mr. Bowman is an exemplary employee. He treats bellflowers as if it's his home and takes pride in every aspect of his duties. Mr. Bowman takes his role as head custodian very seriously and is a truly a leader of his team. He put together a binder of all of his duties, daily, weekly, and monthly, and he also puts together a checklist for the night crew to ensure that all responsibilities are covered. Mr. Bowman always has a smile on his face and a spring in his step. When we have extra activities, this is from the bellflower staff, Mr. Bowman brings his family, which has helped to endear him, to the parents of Bellflower. The students adore him as he's always available to help, and despite his hawking sighs... I didn't write it. ...is a kind and gentle soul. Congratulations, Chris.
Next, receiving an award of service, Rhonda Mauer. Rhonda?
Rhonda has been an outstanding addition to the Memorial Middle School Building since she joined the guidance department in September of 2013. Rhonda's enthusiasm is infectious, and her positive demeanor has helped to set a warm and welcoming tone for the guidance department. It is apparent that she enjoys interacting with the students, families, and colleagues that visit the guidance office. Rhonda is capable of and willing to have the difficult conversations with parents that sometimes secretaries and guidance people have to have in an effort to support the students and the school. She greets each visitor to the guidance office with a smile and presents a calm and pleasant demeanor to others. She is confident, self-directed, and calming during emergency situations, and is always willing to lend a hand. Congratulations, Rhonda.
Our next Outstanding Service Award goes to Bill Miller. Mr. Miller?
This is what the staff at Shore had to say about Mr. Miller. Ever since Bill arrived at Shore, our building has never looked better. He suggested his office be moved by the entry door for extra security for the school. I think that's a great idea. Bill will go above and beyond for the Shore community and will do so without asking. Bill has proven himself to be a very valuable employee by the two promotions he has earned in such a short time. He is a self-starter and always looks for ways to make more improvements to the building and grounds. Bill is here for the students and will do anything to ensure the Shore community is safe and in a welcoming, learning environment. Students greet Mr. Miller with a big smile because they know they'll get a friendly welcome back. I won't go into too much detail, but other than, Bill, you need to know that the Shore staff, many of them wrote very nice comments about you. Too many to go into tonight, but I'll send those along to you, and I'm sure you won't be surprised, but they definitely went the extra effort to make sure you were acknowledged. So congratulations, Bill.
Next, for Outstanding Service, Mrs. Linda Pucci. Linda?
Linda was the face and heart of the IT department in the Mentor Public Schools, and if you've been around any extended period of time, you know that that's a big job. Linda acts as the bridge between the district's many verticals and constantly goes above and beyond in the execution of her duties. Linda has kept the IT department running smoothly for over 11 years and can always be counted on for an answer. She never says, "I don't know." If Linda doesn't know the answer, she tracks it down and makes sure the issue is resolved. Linda's enthusiasm for her work and her department have endeared her to her colleagues, past and present. Linda has her colleagues' respect, but she does it one better. She also has their trust. Congratulations, Linda.
Our next Outstanding Service Award goes to Janet Riordan. Janet?
Mrs. Riordan has been a tremendous support for Memorial Middle School. She is always positive and is willing to accept all tasks, large and small. Mrs. Riordan displays a great deal of knowledge of the various office tasks and is a great resource for the building. She is readily available to answer the different questions that come her way and provide her assistance when needed. Mrs. Riordan displays excellent interpersonal skills, which makes her very approachable. People look forward to speaking with her. She is funny and makes them feel comfortable. Congratulations, Janet.
I'm going to pass the mic. Our next Outstanding Service Award is going to Judy Willett. Judy?
The nomination indicates Judy is extremely conscientious and dedicated in her commitment to managing the accounts payable section to ensure proper procedures are followed and accuracy is maintained. She is detail-oriented. She is open to new methods to improve the work process. Judy is helpful in assisting coworkers throughout the district with their questions regarding budgets, processing purchase orders, and school accounting procedures. She is very thorough in her explanations, and I will add, even though as administrators we're not part of the process of nomination, if I had two thoughts to sum up Judy's contribution to our district, it would be a tremendous sense of balance between regulatory compliance and problem solving, and she certainly exemplifies Cardinal pride. So Judy, congratulations.
Mr. President, members of the board, also every year, nominations are taken for the certified staff to receive the Excellence in Teaching Awards. Nominees must demonstrate exemplary qualities in his or her teaching profession and be involved in activities which reflect professional commitment. These six recipients represent the best of Mentor Schools. It is our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2015 Excellence in Teaching Awards. We are going to start this evening for the Teaching Awards with Lori Caruso. Lori?
Lori has an amazing passion for her work with preschool students. Preschool is often the first time parents are dealing with knowing their child has special needs, and Lori is supportive and uplifting to these parents. Never one to look for recognition, Lori continues to strive to do her best, work hard, and mentor teachers who are new to the profession. Lori is energetic, professional, encouraging, supportive, and a true lead teacher, passionate, and the definition of an excellent educator. Lori is committed to her profession, as evidenced by her desire to seek more opportunities to expand her knowledge of early childhood education. Lori has devoted time to enhancing her technology skills and created a Google site for parents, students, and colleagues to engage. Congratulations, Lori.
Kathy?
Kathy Kelly is a true professional. Her caring attitude and warm smile lights up her classroom and encourages her students to always do their best. Even the most reluctant learner flourishes in her classroom. Children cannot help but feel supported, both academically and emotionally. She has been the coordinator for the Student Holiday Collection of gifts for the Ritchie White Foundation for the Cleveland Clinic for several years, and she has purchased shoes for a needy child to make that child feel special and important. She is always the first one to volunteer for tasks or responsibilities. Congratulations, Kathy.
Our next Teaching Award winner is Stephanie Ward. Stephanie?
Stephanie Ward is an excellent teacher who has refined her skills for 18 years in the classroom. She tries new and innovative ideas. She readily implements new curriculum. Stephanie has been a strong leader as an active participant on building and district communities, including as PTA or Teacher Representative, Project Moore Coordinator, serving on the district ELA and Math and Science Resource Review Committees. She is strongly aware of addressing the diverse needs of the students in her classroom. Her students are self-motivated and proud. Stephanie has a strong commitment to the teaching profession as seen by her commitment in volunteering in her local school and district committees. Stephanie Ward is respected and admired by colleagues, parents, and students. Stephanie is a master teacher and represents our profession and district well. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Our next Excellence in Teaching Award goes to Tom Dwyer. Tom?
Tom Dwyer is a committed educator who builds relationships with students and creates a learning environment that is focused on student growth and success. Mr. Dwyer has been an integral part of the implementation of blended learning at Rich Middle School and has also given his time to work with his peers throughout the district to rethink how our students learn and create a classroom environment where high-tech meets low-tech. Learning in his classroom is engaging and interactive. A gregarious individual with a unique perspective of the world, math is brought to life for his students each and every day. I think there's YouTube videos of you teaching your kids math skills to music, correct? Rapping, I believe, and other genres? Okay. Mr. Dwyer always has a willingness to go above and beyond. The amount of pride that Tom has in calling himself an educator is inspiring to those with whom he has contact with. Congratulations, Tom.
Our next Excellence in Teaching Award goes to Melissa Koschar. Melissa?
Mrs. Koschar is respected by her students, her coworkers, the parents of her students, and also by administration. She is regularly contacted by administration to get her perspective of voting decisions because she is able to make an unbiased decision that's in the best interest for all the students at Memorial. She goes above and beyond in her position and regularly displays excellence in her classroom. Mrs. Koschar is being nominated for this award and winning this award because of her enthusiasm, success in her classroom, and her leadership in her building. She is admired by everyone she comes in contact with. When decisions need to be made, Melissa is consulted on a regular basis. Her decisions are unbiased and take into account what is best for all the students entering MMS and what is best for all her students as well. Congratulations, Melissa.
And last, but certainly not least, tonight, Mr. Chris Parsons. Chris?
Mr. Parsons' passion is in history and invigorates students in the room to probe more deeply into the reasons behind historical events. He methodically plans out every activity for students so they can gain the deepest understanding of the topic. When it was decided to add an Honors World History course, Mr. Parsons was the first person from his department to speak about the setting up the scope and sequence for the class. Every day, Chris sets the stage for a comfortable environment by being in the hallway greeting each of his students. His efforts help him to build a positive rapport with all the students based on courtesy, respect, and humor. Mr. Parsons also has a way of drawing student interest and creating an atmosphere where each student can feel comfortable taking risks when answering questions. Mr. Parsons is very careful to do this in a manner that is non-threatening to help his students gain confidence and a greater level of understanding. Chris Parsons has been an energetic and successful teacher in his 15 years of service to the Mentor Public School District. Congratulations, Chris.
Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel and Agenda Items C2 through C5, all related to Human Resource Matters.
Some of...
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of the exempt employees' benefits and salaries for the 2015-2016 and 2016-2017 school year.
Some of...
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. or Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of exchange teacher Azat Hassan under contract with and fully funded by the Teachers of Critical Language Program Grant, who will serve as an Arabic teacher at Mentor High School for the 2015-2016 school year.
Some of...
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, at this time, it is our privilege to introduce our newest staff members to Mentor Schools. Every year, we choose the best of the best, and this year is no exception. Today, they start at day one of four professional development days. We feel confident that they'll be outstanding teachers and staff members, and we're excited to have them part of the Cardinal family. Mrs. Burnett will join me on stage as we make the presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, I am very excited to introduce the 2015-2016 new certified staff members to you this to introduce the 2015-2016 new Certified Staff Members to you this evening. Each new staff member went through a rigorous application process and interview process that started way back in March of this current year. As I call your name up, as I call your name, please come up to the stage and remain on the stage until all new staff is called. They're looking forward to that part most, just to let you know. Ashley Arcaro. Ashley will be joining the Bellflower staff as a third grade teacher. She's a recent graduate of Ashland University. Last year she completed a long-term assignment for Willoughby Eastlake Schools at Longfellow Elementary, and she has recently completed her coursework for obtaining her reading endorsement. Welcome to Mentor Schools, Ashley. Next, I'd like to introduce Alex Ardo. Alex is a proud graduate of Mentor High School. She pursued her teaching degree from Lake Erie College in the area of seventh through twelfth science education. Alex recently completed a long-term assignment at Hudson Middle School, and she will now join the staff at Mentor High School and will be a ninth grade physical science teacher. Welcome to Mentor. Justin Benars.
Welcome home.
Justin is joining the Mentor Schools as an Intervention Specialist at CARES this year. He earned his undergraduate degree and master's degree from Kent State University, spent two years with reeducation services, and was recently with the Auburn Career Center as a Career Assessment Specialist. We welcome you to Mentor Schools. Morgan Bond. Morgan will be joining the Ridge Middle School family as an art teacher. She received her undergraduate and graduate degree from Cleveland State University. Recently Morgan has been with Parma Community High School since 2013, and previously has had to overorganize and oversee the extended school year program for Mentor Public Schools. Congratulations. Royal Brett Rager. Royal is a graduate of Liberty University in Virginia and received his license in the area of Health and Physical Education. Last year Royal was a long-term physical education teacher at Mentor High School. This year he will be joining the staff at Shore Middle School as a Health and PE teacher. Congratulations. Rebecca is joining the Fairfax family as an Intervention Specialist this school year. She's a graduate of Bob Jones University in South Carolina, and then furthered her education and pursued her master's in the area of Applied Behavior Analysis. She has spent time working at CARES in the summer program while also working as a behavioral therapist for ABA Outreach Services. We welcome you to Mentor Schools. Brianna Carter. This will be the last time I call her Carter because she was just married a few weeks ago, so it's Brianna Mangus. Brianna is ready to begin her teaching career as a middle school teacher at Memorial Middle School. Last year she was a Title I Reading Teacher with Riverside Local Schools at Lamuth Middle School. She received her undergraduate degree from Baldwin Wallace University and will be an ELA teacher this coming school year. Congratulations. Stephanie Katron. Stephanie has recently received her EDS from Edinburgh in the area of School Psychology. She was an intern with Hanover County Public Schools in Virginia, and previously spent time at the Achievement Center in Pennsylvania as a therapeutic staff member and counselor. Stephanie is excited to join the staff at Mentor High School. Julia Ezo. Julia graduated from Kent State University in 2014 with her Intervention Specialist license. This past year she was an Intervention Specialist at Crossroads in the PHP program. This school year Julia will be opening up the Structure Language Unit at Ridge Middle School, and we welcome her. Congratulations. Wendy Farabaugh. We just got done with the first row. Wendy is joining the Mentor School staff as a French teacher. Wendy joins us from Finley High School and just relocated to the Mentor area. She received her bachelor's degree from Miami University, and she is ready to meet the students at Mentor High and our middle schools. Congratulations. Stephen Garvin. Stephen joins Mentor Schools as an Intervention Specialist at Mentor High School. Stephen spent time at Monarch Schools fulfilling many different roles, and most recently was with Educational Alternatives before becoming a long-term substitute with Mentor Public Schools last year. Welcome to Mentor. Scott Gibson. Scott will be joining the Memorial Middle School staff this year as a Health and PE teacher. He received his bachelor's degree from Grand Valley State University, and last year we were fortunate to have Scott be a long-term substitute at Rice Elementary and Garfield Elementary the second half of the year. Congratulations. Alexa Georgie. Alexa will be joining the staff at CARES as an Intervention Specialist. After graduating from Ohio State, Alexa taught at Miamisburg High School for two years, and last year was with Riverside Local Schools at Leroy Elementary. In the past, Alexa has spent the summers working at the Summer Camp at CARES, and we welcome her to Mentor Schools. Katie Hartrenneth. We are happy to welcome Katie to the Ridge Middle School family as a seventh grade science teacher. For the past two years Katie has spent time as a teacher in Rocky River and has recently moved back to the east side. In 2008 she graduated from Cleveland State University, earning her bachelor's degree in the area of Art Education. She then returned back to Cleveland State to pursue her master's in Curriculum Instruction, and shortly after obtaining her middle school teaching license from Notre Dame College. Welcome to Mentor. Izat Hassan. Izat joins Mentor Schools from Egypt where he received his bachelor's degree in English from Zegazig University in 1994. He has been a senior teacher at Gesta Secondary School for Girls since 2008. He was chosen as the ideal teacher at Midaguar Diktorat? Close enough. In 2013. Izat enjoys playing soccer, cycling, reading, and spending time with his two daughters and his two sons. Welcome to Mentor Schools, we're lucky to have you. Adele Helen. Adele is a proud Mentor High graduate, and then pursued her undergraduate degree from Bowling Green State University in the area of seventh through twelfth Social Studies. After Bowling Green State University, she pursued her license from Baldwin Wallace as an Intervention Specialist. Adele is ready to begin her teaching career as an Intervention Specialist at Mentor High School. Congratulations. Ben Meisel. Ben graduated from Ohio State and began his teaching career with Plymouth Shiloh Local Schools, and then spent a year with Sheffield Schools. This year Ben will be joining the staff at Ridge as the full-time music teacher, as the band and general music teacher, so we welcome you to Ridge and the Mentor family. Valerie Nagy. Valerie joins the staff at Garfield Elementary and Brentmore Elementary as the Physical Education teacher. She received her bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University and her Health License from Capital University. Previously Valerie has taught at Quarterstone Christian Academy, Painesville Schools, and last year with Riverside Local Schools. Welcome. Next, I'd like to introduce Brooke Olay. Brooke attended West Virginia University where she earned her bachelor's and master's degree in the area of Elementary Education and Special Education. She will be joining the Ridge Middle School staff as a preschool teacher and is ready to begin her teaching career with Mentor Public Schools. Congratulations to you Brooke. Stephen Pancheck. Stephen joins the staff at Ridge Middle School as a Physical Education and Health teacher. He's a proud graduate of the University of Mount Union and has previous teaching experience from Pearl Academy in Cleveland. Stephen is excited to join the staff at Ridge Middle School in a week. Congratulations. Megan Reno. Megan will be joining the staff at Fairfax Elementary and Brentmore Elementary as the Gifted Intervention Specialist. Megan received her bachelor's degree from Ohio University and pursued her reading endorsement from Ohio Dominican University. Prior to joining Mentor Schools, Megan was a third grade teacher for Canal Winchester Local School District. Congratulations Megan. Katie Riddle. Katie is a proud Mentor High School graduate, and she will be joining the staff at Hopkins Elementary as a fifth grade teacher. Katie received her undergraduate from Western Kentucky University. Previously she was an elementary teacher with Williamson County School in Tennessee. Last year Katie completed two long-term assignments for Mentor Public Schools, and she's ready to make Mentor Schools her new home. Congratulations. Heather Rogaliner. Heather is very excited to join the Bellflower staff as a fifth grade teacher this school year. Heather graduated from Mentor High School and then attended Bowling Green State University to pursue her education degree, and then later attended Ashland University to obtain her master's in the area of Curriculum and Instruction. Heather is joining us from Madison Schools where she had been a second grade teacher. We welcome you to Mentor. Congratulations. Katie Runyon. We are pleased to welcome Katie to the Brentmore family as a fourth grade teacher. Katie graduated from Ohio State in the area of Child Development and then pursued her master's in the area of Education from Ohio State. Previously Katie spent time teaching for Olmsted Falls and recently was a preschool teacher at Willoughby United Methodist. She is very excited to join the Brentmore family. Deena Swainey. Deena is a proud graduate of Mentor High School. Deena received her bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University in the area of Art Education, and then pursued her master's degree from Cleveland State in the area of Special Education. Deena was previously with Crossroads PHP program, and this school year she will be at Mentor High School as an Intervention Specialist, working with the students and the Career-Based Intervention Program. Welcome to Mentor. Megan Taylor. Megan will be joining the staff at Ridge Middle School. Megan received her bachelor's degree from Kent State University in the area of Middle School Education. Previously she was with Horizon Science Academy Dennison Elementary in Cleveland, and she's excited to become a part of the Ridge Middle School family. Congratulations. Stephanie Thomas. Stephanie will be joining the staff at Memorial Middle School where she will be an English Language Arts teacher. Previously Stephanie spent five years with Alliance City Schools. She received her bachelor's degree from the University of Mount Union and received her master's degree in Educational Administration from Ashland University. Welcome to Mentor. Kimberly Vako. Kimberly is a proud Mentor High School graduate and received her bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University. Kimberly completed her student teaching at Elmwood High School in the spring of 2015. Kim will be joining the Mentor High School staff as an Intervention Specialist this school year. Welcome to Mentor. Ashley Wallace. Ashley is a proud graduate of Mentor High School and Lake Erie College. She completed her student teaching at Hopkins Elementary and has recently spent time in Chagrin Falls and also Garfield Heights School District. Ashley will be joining the staff at Mentor High School as a ninth grade physical science teacher while also traveling to Memorial to teach a section of science and a section of social studies. We welcome you. Rachel is also a proud graduate of Mentor High School who went to the University of Toledo to pursue her education degree. Since then she has pursued her K-12 reading license along with her fourth and fifth grade endorsement. Last year Rachel spent the entire year as a first grade teacher at Millridge Elementary for Mayfield Schools. She will be joining the staff at Fairfax Elementary as a fourth grade teacher this year. Congratulations Rachel. Jill Wasco. Jill is ready to begin the school year at Hopkins Elementary as a fourth grade teacher. Jill spent time as a fourth grade teacher at Lakewood Local School District in Hebron, Ohio before moving to Cleveland in 2000. This past school year Jill completed a long-term assignment for Mentor Public Schools at Shore Middle School. Welcome to Mentor. Sarah Westler. Sarah joins the Mentor High School staff this school year fulfilling the role of the school psychologist. Sarah attended Edinburgh University to obtain her bachelor's degree, master's degree, and EDS. This past school year she spent the year at Elizabeth Ford School District in Elizabeth, Pennsylvania. We welcome you to Mentor High School. Congratulations. Christine Weiss. Christine will be joining the Memorial Middle School staff this year as an Intervention Specialist. Last year Christine completed a long-term assignment at Memorial Middle School. Christine received her bachelor's degree from Damon College, and she's ready to continue her career with Mentor Schools. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Meredith Winfield. Meredith will be joining the staff at Fairfax and Sterling Morton Elementary as a Speech Language Pathologist. Meredith received her bachelor's degree from Ohio University in the area of Communication Sciences and Disorder, and her master's degree in Speech Language Pathology from the University of Akron. We welcome you to Mentor Schools, Meredith. Susan Wolf. Susan is joining the Garfield Elementary staff as an Intervention Specialist this school year. Last year she completed her student teaching at Sterling Morton Elementary and then completed a long-term assignment at Fairfax Elementary. Susan has her bachelor's in the area of Business Administration and has received her education licensure from Notre Dame College. Welcome. Tricia Zedrich. Tricia joins our staff this school year as the Mentor Schools' parent mentor. Tricia has her bachelor's degree from the University of Mount Union in the area of Political Science. Tricia will serve as a resource to our Mentor parents and staff members, and she is ready to begin her time in Mentor. I would also take a moment, I'd like to call up Cory Prokop and Katie Braun up to the stage also. Katie and Cory at last minute, probably the end of last week, found out that they were filling in for a long-term assignment for us beginning, well today kind of with new staff orientation. And we'll carry them through December and possibly beyond. I wanted to recognize them as they were with us this evening. Cory will be filling in at Sterling Morton Elementary in the third grade, and Katie will be filling in at Mentor High School as an Intervention Specialist, and they have been a great addition to our staff also. So we welcome both of you to Mentor Schools also.
Welcome, everybody. We're excited to have you in the Cardinal family. At this time, I'm guessing Mrs. Kirby Estes is going to want pictures, so if you want to exit stage that way, at that door, we'll have her take some photos.
Mr. President, members of the Board, that concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Under Board Business Number One, annually, the Ohio School Boards Association requests that we designate a delegate and alternate to attend the annual business meeting. Annual business meeting is an opportunity to set the legislative and policy platform for the Ohio School Boards Association, which represents 99% of all school districts in Ohio. So we do not need a motion or a vote, but do need either volunteers, or the President needs to volunteer someone. We can volunteer, I'm sure we do.
I'm happy to go.
Thank you, Mary. Need an alternate. And we need an alternate.
I'd be glad to. Next on the agenda, it's recommended to approve the Shared Food Service Management Services Agreement between Kirtland Local Schools and Mentor Exempted Village School District.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yep.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
This evening, there will be no legislative report. Our state legislators, I believe, are on vacation, so... Moving on, Mr. Wilson, Chief Financial Officers, report and recommendation, please.
Thank you. It's recommended that financial statements for the month of July 2015 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
Second.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yeah.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education ratify the investment transactions for the month of July 2015 and our investment portfolio.
So moved.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the inter-fund transfers presented in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved. Second.
Please call the role, Ms. Wilson.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications presented in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved. Second.
Please call the role, Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriation presented in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second. Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the 2015-2016 Student Activity Purpose, Goals, and Budgets as presented in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved. Second.
Is that Jenny? Yeah. Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
And finally, unfortunately, I was on the bad list, so I'm asking the Board of Education approve Exhibit 7-G with my explanation on being tardy and processing a purchase order.
So moved. Second.
Please call the role, Ms. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
That completes my items this evening.
Any unfinished business topics? None? New business? 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 Nothing?
Getting ready for school.
Okay. Hearing of the public? Second opportunity? Hearing none? There will be no executive sessions this evening? Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Please call the role, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.